Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the May 14th meeting of the City County Board of Chosen Freeholders. We begin today as always with our proud agenda. Who gives the oral call?
Freeholders, Arthur, Best, Dumby, James, LaFleur, Deputy Director Lazard, Director Bartlett.
Here.
Anthony, can I say this before?
Thank you, Director.
Just to go out in order, if that's okay, we're going to do number two first. So this evening, we are going to swear in the Dej Allwaters as our Deputy County Counsel. So on the Dej, I'm going to ask you to come up to the podium. You could drag your husband as well. If you don't have to drag them, ask them nicely.
They'll be running.
Take your time, hurry up. And the Freehold, Director Bartlett is going to swear you into the office. You could bring everybody up if you'd like.
Everybody, over master, everybody.
Come on, everyone who's here for the Dej, your sister, the beautiful flowers.
We've done this before, fear not. But it's a privilege for me, both as the Director of the Freeholders Board and as an attorney myself, to be part of this process. The Council Office has been growing and undergoing change and having worked with you in the Dej. I think there are great things ahead with you as Deputy County Counsel to make it official tonight. So with that, place your right hand in the Bible and your left hand in the air. I repeat that. I, taking your name.
I, the Dej Allwaters.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties as Deputy County Counsel.
As Deputy County Counsel.
For the county of the Say.
For the county of the Say.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help you God.
I'd like to thank everyone, my family, my husband, and friends and pastors for coming here tonight. I'd like to thank the Chairman and the Board of Chosen Freeholders who have given me this opportunity to serve the people of the Say County. I have been a resident now for over ten years since I moved here from Boston, and I do not have chosen a better county to live in. And now I'm blessed to be in this county, so I'm grateful and thankful for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
An attorney who said all the right things. And Director, before we go into the main attraction, if you will, of the evening, I do just want to report that two weeks ago, the county sold $6.4 million worth of college bonds. The successful bidder was Rose Melvin Cross at an interest rate of 2.42, who paid over the next fourteen years. So it was a good sale, again, part of the residual of our upgraded laundry of a little bit of years, it was competitive, and certainly a good ring. I just wanted to report that to the Freeholders. So at this time, we are going to begin our celebration of Asian Pacific Americans in healthcare this year. We've always seemed to have a theme, and this year is those in the healthcare business. So I'm going to turn it over to Freehold Director John Bartlett. Give him a nice round of applause.
Thank you very much, Anthony. This is a tradition that we began seven years ago, adding Asian Pacific American Heritage Month to a year of months, by which I mean, we always have the wonderful opportunities throughout each year to recognize the men and women who lead the communities that make up the Say County. And the fact that we've been doing this now for seven years, and as you said, Anthony, having a theme each year, whether it's education or communities of faith, or this year, healthcare, makes it, I think, a very special part of our year. The Say County is blessed to have a very diverse group of Asian American communities, Indian, Pakistani, Hanoverian, Korean, and other communities, Filipino communities as well, who are part of this rich tapestry and, from the personal standpoint, rich cuisine. And I invite all of you to stick around, we're going to have a buffet dinner downstairs in the atrium after today's celebration from Joti, which is the Indian restaurant on Route 46 near Willbrook. Always a good spread, and we do have plenty of takeout containers, because I know some of you are observing the fast during the holy month of Ramadan and won't be able to eat for a couple more hours, but by all means, take it home and chow down when you're able to do so. We are happy to boast that we are one of three counties that actually has an Asian American Freeholder. Assad, after, will be joining us shortly, the first Muslim American South Asian Freeholder, and now one of three South Asian Freeholders across the state of New Jersey. So with that, why don't we begin with the flag salute, and then we'll move on to the proclamation? Everyone, please rise. Now, I want you to know, Terry, traditionally, as those of you who are repeat participants know, we have some sort of cultural or music part of the program. We couldn't do that this year, unfortunately, but I want you to know, I made every effort to bring us the Indian American bagpipe and drum band from Secaucus. And I'm going to work on that for next year, because I know one month of bagpipes is just not enough.
Oh, no comment.
So with that, we're doing something special and unique and different this year, in addition to recognizing individuals in our community, and that is recognizing the issue of bullying against Asian Pacific Americans. I know that's something that Assad worked on, and I want to give him the opportunity to be part of it, so we're going to skip over that line in the program and move on to begin introducing our honorees. As we've mentioned, this year is a theme of Asian Pacific Americans in healthcare, and I think our three honorees give us an example of how broad a group that is. Certainly, I don't want to call Asian Americans in healthcare a cliche, but I can certainly say that my father-in-law is part of a cohort of people, literally eighty percent of his medical class from India practices here in the U.S. And there was a moment in American history when a great wave of physicians arrived from Asia and elsewhere to our great benefit in this nation. And one of those immigrant stories is the immigrant story of Dr. Javeen Ahmed and her family. So Javeen, and anyone with you, Chairman, please join me up here.
It's an honor, a pleasure, and a surprise, reading this stuff, bear with me. We have the Chairman close by, that makes me a little nervous, so we might as well tell you now. Whereas, the month of May has been designated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made in the United States by immigrants from Asian and Pacific American descendants. Board of Chosen Freeholders of County of Say needs a bidding appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dr. Javeen Ahmad and, no, no, send it. Whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad was born in London to parents who were born in Accra and Utah. Pasha, you know, thanks, John, I appreciate that you've given us, Indian and immigrated with her family to the United States at the age of two, arriving first in New York City, and whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad attended Columbia University as an undergraduate and completed her Bachelor's of Pharmacy from St. John's School of Pharmacy and her Doctorate in Pharmacy from the University of Florida. Whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad is a healthcare professional, entrepreneur, and registered pharmacist in New York, New Jersey, and Florida with over twenty years' experience. She speaks five languages, I can only speak one, and you can speak five, loves you. And she works tirelessly to improve the standard of living for women and minorities as well as unrepresented communities, and whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad serves as Commissioner on the Board of Say County Board of Social Services, assisting in director and outreach programs such as County Fair, Boys and Girls Club, Addiction Prevention and Treatment, and serves as co-chair for Health and Human Services on the Transition Team of Mayor Andres Say of Patterson, and was a panelist on the Say County's Leadership Summit in Empowerment of Young Women in the Say County. Whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad serves as a Board of D Caza in four cities of the Say County and the Drug Commission under the Arabic American Medical Association for Advocacy and Educational Awareness for Drug Addiction and Rehabilitation in South Patterson. And whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad is the owner of Fit Female Fitness Center, which provides a safe and comforting space for women who knows of faith to exercise, swim, seek counseling on health and wellness. Whereas, she has hosted Zambuans?
Zubathons.
Zubathons.
That's boning, that's nice.
That's the right, yeah. I'm getting there, Chairman. You're working it. For her big brothers, big sisters, and Wampa House, and she has collected donations for Free the Girls Global Campaign Against Human Trafficking. And whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad is also the owner of Shafia Pharmacy in Fairfield and Patterson, donated over fifty thousand glucose monitors and blood pressure machines to the community, hosted health fairs, awareness seminars, and free glucose and blood pressure screenings, and provided pharmacy internships to local area students. She has donated free backpacks and school supplies to school nine for back-to-school and for all the South Patterson schools at Christmas. She has provided free flu shots for teachers of South Patterson. Whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad has donated first aid supplies and needed fire victims, provided essential hygiene supplies for the homeless in Newark, contributed more than two hundred packs of essential personal items for Syrian refugee families arriving in Say County in recent years. And whereas, Dr. Javeen Ahmad is a partner in the restaurant Antiga Grill, did I pronounce that right? Antiga, Antiga Grill in Montclair. Now therefore, be proclaimed by Board of Chosen Freeholders of County of Say, hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dr. Javeen Ahmad for the significant contributions she has made and exemplary service she has devoted to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Dr. Javeen Ahmad. Good morning. Right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would just like to take a moment, if you will, of special privilege, just to not think at all of you for being here, but Dr. Javeen is truly what we call a public servant. She gifts herself to the community regardless of what part of the community it is. I have not met anyone, and I have many of you that I've worked with in so many years that give so much to others. But Dr. Javeen, she stands apart. She's an extremely highly educated woman, she's raised a beautiful family, but she still finds time to give back to the Say County community, matter of fact, the community of New Jersey. So we are just honored to have you part about the Say County family, Doctor, and congratulations. This is truly a small token of everything that you do for others and not for yourself.
I'd first like to say I'm so thankful that I even have the ability to be able to do public service, and thank you to the Freeholders of the Say County for your consideration, particularly because I believe that acts of kindness, service, going out of one's way to help people is a innate behavior that is done really for the sake of the greater good. In light of Mother's Day, I'd like to say that I'm most proud of being a mother of five, and it's often a dangerous job, and I put most of my energy into raising the next generation of leaders that will serve the public for the sake of the higher good. My older son has had his own company since he was nineteen and makes more than a pharmacist's salary, that's when I knew I was in the wrong business, and he supports numerous charities, and I have a daughter who's a warrior for social justice, who announced early that she was going to be broke, but she was going to be happy because she's going to help people. And then I have another son who is seeking a professional career as a comedian, and that's going to be his service to public mental health. Serving the Say County has been, since 1998, has been very challenging but extremely gratifying. It's a place that really needed care and sincere individuals that want to make a difference in the lives of those who have several barriers and lack of access. And I remember one of my first stories was having a patient come in from Walgreens with his young son, who had been on liquid antibiotics for two days but still had a fever. And I remember looking down at that child, and he had pink thump coming out of his ear. So I remember saying to myself, this is, and this is an oral antibiotic, so if any of you have children, you remember the liquid amoxicillin is given via mouth, not dropped into the ear, and it's, I realized that, you know, you really have, this is a place where I can make a real big difference. But being honored as an Asian Pacific American is really interesting for me, because there's so many days that I have to go back between Bengali, Hindi, Arabic, English, those that speak Haitian French versus the Catholic Sisters that speak Parisian French, understanding the cultural barriers as well as the language barriers. So it's really nice to be acknowledged by my roots, but truly, I have loved serving the community as a whole, and thank you again, thank you again.
So if you saw one theme emerging there, it's one that you're going to continue to see, which is people who aren't just doing their work in the medical profession, but are taking it and making meaningful out of it in the public service, who outreach beyond themselves, beyond their families, beyond their businesses, to all kinds of communities. And I think that's an ideal segue to our second honoree, Hitesh Bhatt. And I'm going to take the privilege of reading this one myself, because Hitesh's wife, Kim, one of you is going to have to put down the camera, are dear friends, and I'd like you to join me up here. So we've met a pharmacist, we're about to meet an M.D., and in between, we're meeting another major facet of healthcare in America today, and that's healthcare technology. And getting to know Hitesh over these past years has been fascinating for me, just to learn about what you can do in that space of healthcare technology. So I'm going to skip the whereas about Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, because Terry did such a great job with that. So let me launch right into your story, Hitesh. Whereas, Hitesh Bhatt attended Lodi and Southwood High Schools and the U of D NJ School of Radiology, where he developed a love for medical service and a fascination with technology's growing role in protecting and improving human health. And whereas, Hitesh Bhatt is founder and chief technology officer of Bhatt CCS LLC Technology Solutions Center, a provider of technology advisory services to large healthcare and education enterprises. He's a trusted advisor to the Chief Information Officer of Rush University Medical Center in Chicago, where he is helping to develop and roll out next-generation medical record and diagnostic technology, and he helped create a nationwide private food purchasing organization that for over twenty years has helped lower healthcare costs and developed a purchasing model that has helped Hackensack University Medical Center save millions in technology purchases. And whereas, Hitesh Bhatt is founder and CEO of the Bhatt Foundation, serving the United States, Honduras, India, and Africa, where his work has led to tangible results on numerous projects, including serving as a key participant in the HUMC Hackensack Foundation's fundraising to over forty-four million dollars in 2016 and fifty-four million dollars in 2017. And whereas, Bhatt CCS LLC and the Bhatt Foundation have donated in-kind gifts to HUMC worth over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in technology equipment to improve patients' lives, donated over twenty-five-thousand dollars in IT equipment and office supplies to New Jersey's Manchester Regional High School, where Hitesh and his wife, Kim, also sponsor an annual college scholarship of one-thousand dollars. Provide state-of-the-art technology to modernize public hospitals in the Honduran Bay Islands of Roatan, Lutila, and Guanaya by providing technology and healthcare equipment worth almost five-hundred-thousand dollars over four years, as well as over two-point-five-million dollars in software to nationalize electronic medical records and electronic health records for the entire country of Honduras, with a vision to modernize and support the RBC Rehabilitation Center in Roatan, as well as provide state-of-the-art technology to benefit all patients. I have to say, if you see his pictures from the beach in Roatan, you will understand the excellent choice of hospital he's decided to serve. And whereas, the Bhatt Foundation has sponsored an educational scholarship to Miss Bay Island Heritage for Women's Empowerment and Continued Education, and the Foundation supports Bay Island Community Health Association, Clinica Esperanza, Roatan, by providing healthcare technology to improve patient health, and aided in construction of a radiology imaging center on the island to provide free ultrasounds, X-rays, CT scans, and MRIs in the near future. And the Bhatt Foundation is looking forward to bringing partners from the United States who pioneer in women's health to change women's health in South and Central America. And whereas, Hitesh Bhatt has personally participated and supported the Joseph Evans Samsari Charity Motorcycle Run in Rockville since its inception, to raise funds for the Children's Hospital at Hackensack Medical Center, and he has hosted an event as a chairperson which raised over seventy-five-thousand dollars for the Boy Scouts of America's Northern New Jersey Chapter STEM Scouts Initiative. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Say that hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Hitesh Bhatt for the significant contributions he has made and exemplary service he has devoted to the community, and be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Hitesh Bhatt for continued success.
Wow, thank you so much. Normally, I encourage all my women empowerment, that's our motto, this is what foundations and vice versa, so we empower women. I just announced yesterday at Rush University in Chicago that we're going to open up twenty-nine jobs, and the CEO says, "Hitesh, what are you going to hire?" "Only women, only women." And they looked at me and said, "Congratulations, go for it." So that's what we are planning to do. So my background comes from innovations, technology, my parents who always wanted to be a medical guy. We have so many doctors, my family's here, thanks to my uncles and aunts, who are my second fathers and mothers, who grew me here, who thought we had to do it right, and now we have opportunity to give back. We are the first hospitals in the United States, five G, just started yesterday, robotic surgery, launching wave finders, building brand-new cancer centers, that you go to hospitals and you put your glasses on, you don't need to tell anyone, the glasses can tell you where to go, which you're going to go, and which doctors are going to go, and how long you have to wait for. You know, as soon as you get to the parking lot, the parking lot can tell you where to park, Hackensack, the apps will tell you, and your medical record comes in your seat, in your environment, in the apps, and you can say, you know, you're packing it up or jogging, you choose, you know, how fast you can accomplish that. State of New Jersey, my boss, Dr. Shafik Rabb, asked me, "Let's do Sienna, let's do the, because all these medical breaches occurring." So we decided to do Dark Fiber, which is all the way up to Pelacita Medical Center at UofA Hospital, now as well as Hackensack Radiology. Entire, all your medical record, doesn't matter which hospital you belong to, it's on the dark fibers, we use that, you, no one can penetrate that. Your medical record is always there, secure, behind the power outlet, firewall that I designed it on, that the EOD, Department of Defense, when we went there, we went to the White House, we wanted to see how they do it, how's the secure cybersecurity system. And still, New Jersey is the first one to do that, both man, dark, end-to-end, so we have accomplished that. And now I have opportunity to go to Chicago, working with mayors, we've been working with Franciscan Outreach Homeless Centers, Chicago outside of the district, there's African-American populations, the people least twenty or less, inside of the population of Luton, people least twenty years longer. So now we put in Higgy machines on airports, bus stations, talking to Honorable Mayor Newark Mayor Barak, we're going to put at Newark Airport all the machines. So if you're waiting for your flight gate, we want to know, are you taking your bar pressure medicine online, and are you taking your diabetes medicine online, are you vaccinated properly? If not, we'll provide it to you. So that required me to go to Uber, Uber already has an Uber Eats. So then, that requires to go to Starbucks here and say, "Hey, what do you do with all your food at night?" Well, we throw away. How about our Uber Eats can pick them up, and we distribute it to all our neighbors? So that's how we do it. So then, while we're doing all these technological innovations, and then we learned that the Chicago homeless centers, which is about eight hundred peoples in the, Franciscan operates homeless centers, and there's eight hundred peoples out waiting outside in line, and then how, why are they waiting so long? Why is it twenty-four hours wait? So the Kiwi's Company, BDI, they make sanitary, which is kills HIV virus, which as you know, they, you just wipe it instantly, wipes out. So Kim and I, we decided to distribute entire Chicago, all the homeless centers, BDI, and so the batteries can be available instantly, instead of waiting for twenty-four hours, somebody comes and sanitizes it and the next person comes. So those are the things we are working with. The last project I'm working with, Apple, Tim Cook, with the diabetes, and this is the first time I'm announcing publicly, that Apple Watch will be considered by, hopefully by next year, will be medicalized. We already know that ECGM, with the cardiology, it's already approved, and we predict that, the way I'm working on it, innovation lab, that five years from now, your Apple Watch will tell you the blood sugar, your A and C, by hour by hour, so you don't have to poke your fingers, you know, so that's what we're working on. But thank you so much, and I want to congratulate you, all of you, of Say County, for now raising my taxes and doing a wonderful job. So thank you very much for honoring me.
Why don't we do a picture with our last two, with our second, third honorees together? So we can think of this as halftime in today's Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, because we've honored Dr. Obed, we've honored Hitesh Bhatt, one of the, our third honoree is someone that preholder actually brought to my attention, so for that, and also aside, because you were instrumental in making sure that we recognize this month, the issue of bullying as it affects Asian Americans. I want to pass the baton to you and have you do our next two proclamations.
First of all, forgive me for being late, it's not that I was trying to be on what we call South Asian time, it's just unfortunately the traffic created a problem with childcare and getting here on time, so I apologize. So it's my great honor to recognize a good friend and a member of the community who has done a lot to help come here with me, who I've had the chance to work with on putting together help events and others that have helped not just the foundation community, but others throughout Patterson State County. So whereas the month amazes and designated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in recognition of outstanding achievements and achievements made to the United States, made to the United States by immigrants from Asia, Pacific Islands, and the descendants, the Board of Children's Freeholders of the County of State deemed it fitting and appropriate this time to honor recognize Dr. Daniel M. Huck. And whereas Dr. Huck was born in Nogali, Bangladesh, and immigrated to the United States at the age of 11, settling in Patterson, he attended Patterson Public Schools and graduated from Kennedy High School, he attended Livingston College and Rutgers University, choosing biology as a major, and when his father became unemployed, he had to work to help support his family while he attended college and graduated Rutgers for the bachelor's degree in biology. Whereas after graduating, he continued to work for more than three years to support his family, thereafter attended the Newberg School of Nursing and the Accelerator Program, and completed it in one year. He passed the nursing board exam as first attempt and worked as a nurse at St. Theodore's University Hospital in Brunswick, as a main provider for his family. His salary enabled him to send all three of his brothers to pursue medical studies in Bangladesh, and on a visit to his brother Derek and then his then future wife, marrying her later that year, returning to Patterson. This wife, right? Yes. Whereas Dr. Huck went back to graduate school at King University and graduated the dual master's degree, the Masters of Science in Nursing and Master of Public Health, which nailed him to work as a nursing supervisor as well as agency nursing, teaching nursing students at various colleges as an adjunct professor. And whereas when his wife bought their first home in Patterson, he started to raise a family, which time he decided to go back to school, fulfilled his dream of becoming a doctor, leading his wife and children with his parents, he attended medical school in St. Kitts, West Indies, traveling to home between semesters and working to support his family here and to support himself as a student. And whereas he graduated from medical school, returned to Patterson, and upon the death of his father, he began to work full-time to support his family despite enduring the fair share of misfortune, his passion for how people never die, but on the contrary, increased, and as he studied for board exams, he started up with health fairs to help those in need of medical care. But since he did not complete the residency training, he reached out to several physicians, including Dr. Sahel Affleck and others, who agreed to help provide care to the poor needy in the community. And whereas Dr. Huck's been organizing health fairs where people in the community can see a doctor for medical needs without a fee, they've reached out to other organizations such as St. Joseph's Hospital, Four Seasons State County, New Jersey Family Care, SAM, and others to help serve the community and provide access to healthcare. And whereas he's currently according to Hackensack University Medical Center as administrative head nurse, working with internal medicine physicians, a student doctor, and adjunct professor of Burkey College, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Children's Freeholders of the County of State that hereby publicly recognizing and applauding Dr. Daniel M. Huck for significant contributions he's made and exemplary service he has devoted to the community, and be it further proclaimed that the board extends sincere best wishes to Dr. Huck for continued success. Congratulations.
Wow, where to begin? I was told it's only for two minutes. I guess the speeches that I heard were much longer than that, so mine is very brief. I don't have as much accomplishment as you or Dr. Obed, but I'm on the process of getting there. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good night, that's here. So I just want to say a few words, not to take up too much of your time. So I started this health fair three years ago with a couple of my friends at State Medical School and also a couple of doctors to see what we can do to help the community. I couldn't have done it without my wife, who's my right hand, as well as my daughter and my children also, but I'm going to see them, have them take part in it so that way they could see and be active in the community as well. Obviously, what you teach at home goes on for the next generation. I would not be able to be where I am today without my mother, who worked her tail off to support us. Yes. Right. She worked out in a factory with family of seven, she worked her butt off to get where we are. I mean, today I have three brothers that are M.D.s, one brother who works for Ernest Niang, he's a junior partner, and here I am as multiple degrees and trying to get to the next level, but I haven't forgotten my route. Patterson is my home, I've been here all my life, and I want to do what I can to help the community that I live with. And I want to do everything I can and get as much as out there to the people. My goal is to go around and cherry on Patterson to provide community services in terms of healthcare, assisting people, in terms of diabetes, as you mentioned, and hypertension, which is how to kill a lot of people that don't know they had it, by going to doing health fair, checking their blood sugar and blood pressure, we're able to introduce them to their work, right? Let them know that they have medical issues, that they should seek help right away, so that way for them long-term complications. This is one of my initial goals, I want to get my children, as well as my wife and I to come and help me, and anybody in the community that wants to do that, I think it's a great thing. I just want to add my note, by ending a quote from Mother Teresa, she said, "I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the water to create many ripples." So to people out there, you can be one of those people that can create the ripple and help the people that you run. And pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Okay, if I could just, everybody take their seats again, we'll conclude our program. I want to read a proclamation which was brought to my attention, that I was asked if we could pass a proclamation to recognize Asian American Pacific Islander Day against bullying and things. I think this is a critical thing, I was asked if we could pass a resolution, and I thought it was very important that we do so. This is Asian American Heritage, Asian American Pacific American Heritage Month. Unfortunately, you know, we talk about the stories of those who came before us, you know, when I heard Dr. Huck talk about his father, Javeen, I know you lost your father not that long ago, I know me personally, I'm lucky and blessed to serve both my parents, but we owe so much to our parents who came here before us, who made the sacrifices, who made the effort, who put on a line, who went through a lot more, came to, most of them came to a foreign country, maybe having limited language skills, almost certainly having very limited financial wealth at the time they came. They needed a lot of sacrifices to get us here, to bring us to this point, and I think it's a very important part of the Asian American Pacific American story that we recollect as well. But I know that a lot of children of those immigrants who grew up here and continue to grow up here suffer from bullying. I was one of those children. This is personal to me, because when I came, even though I was born in this country, and actually didn't, you know, my parents immigrated here and had me here, but then we moved abroad, actually to Africa for several years, then came back. So in many ways, my experience when I came back to second grade was I was kind of foreign to everybody. And I know many of the other foreign students who weren't as acclimated, who maybe had some language issues, or maybe just dressed differently, or ate different foods, or their parents looked different, or all those things, suffered from bullying. And it can be a devastating thing, you can feel very alone, and we've seen, unfortunately, we've seen children lose their lives to bullying, and it's a problem unfortunate which is getting worse. And when it comes to ethnicity and when it comes to things, these things can hurt, they can be used to hurt people. So I want to read this proclamation, and I hope that we can act upon it during this month and moving forward. Whereas the Board of Children's Freeholders of the County of State is aware that the month has made it and designated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, whereas there's been a staggering rise in bullying, discrimination, hate crimes, and anti-immigrant and xenophobic crime in the United States in recent years. Whereas May 8, 2, is the birthday of Vincent Cheney, who was brutally murdered in a heat crime in Detroit in 1982, feeling a national Asian American act of anger that continues to this day. And whereas New Jersey has not been immune to Asian, anti-Asian violence, including notorious dot busters attacks in Jersey City in Hoka and Hoboken in the 1980s, which included the murder of Narolas Voddy and numerous other attacks that injured members of the city's Indian immigrant community, left Dr. Asul Saran with brain damage and caused fear across South Asian American communities. And whereas in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and in memory of Vincent Cheney, May 18 has been designated as a Day of No Bullying by Acta Change, a national nonprofit dedicated to fighting bullying in Asian American Pacific Islander community. Whereas every kid, kids of all ages, whereas every day of kids of all ages suffer bullying in schools and online. And whereas in Asian American Pacific Islander communities, this problem is often compounded by cultural, religious, and linguistic barriers that prevent youths from seeking and receiving help, and certain AAPI groups, including South Asian, WISO, C, Micronesian, LGBT, immigrant Unlimited, English proficient youth are more likely to be targets of bullying. And whereas half of Asian American students report being bullied, and two-thirds of Sikh American students, and half of Muslim American students report being bullied because of their religion. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Children's Freeholders of the County of State that hereby publicly joins with Acta Change, in sharing the vision of a world where all youths, including the AAPI community, have the opportunity to grow up for the proud and supportive development of identity and sharing a story, and be it further proclaimed that this board is committed to this support issue and encourages the public to foster dialogue, share resources, and learn more to stand up against bullying. Thank you. I just want to close our program, I want to thank our preholder director, John Bartlett, who I had the honor to be the first South Asian elected to the preholder board, State County's second in state of New Jersey, but it was a real great feeling to know that there had been a champion for the South Asian community and for so many other communities, but to, that this program existed before I was on the preholder board, and that's thanks to our preholder director, John Bartlett, and we're round of applause. I just want to conclude by saying that, you know, around the world, wherever you go, you know, no matter how poor or wealthy a country may be, or what its culture or religious background, or whatever, there is one profession that is almost universally seen with high regard, and that is the profession of medicine and health. And that's because all our lives are counted upon these individuals who give of themselves to help heal. And while, you know, doctors here are generally well taught and say they're to take care of, that's not always the case around the world. And in many cases, people have to work in very dangerous or harsh conditions to give health, to provide health to others. And this feeling of high regard for the health community is definitely very strong in the South Asian community. You know, the joke for the longest time was that there was only two professions in South Asian, it was either medicine or engineering. And then, when you can imagine how worried my parents were when my math and science grades were my lowest, generally. So luckily, there have been more options, more avenues opened up to us, thankfully for me, more avenues opened up to us for education and for success. But I think we still hold very high regard, those members of our community who work in health, work in medicine, and we're very thankful for all that they do and sustain. And our South Asian community is stronger, and what I love about these honorees, who are lucky enough to be a person, is that they go beyond their professional commitments, they give of themselves to the community. These are real community workers, they have families of their own, they have busy careers, but they give to others, they understand that giving health is about more than, you know, sometimes you have to give free health, especially in an area like this, where State County, we have a lot of people we can't afford. Giving of that help, we're very grateful for all that, and we thank you for it, and together, we know the South Asian community will continue to succeed in State County, and we thank you for our contributions. Thank you all. But don't forget the buffet downstairs, thank you to our team, particularly Jasmine and Marisha, for the medal.
That concludes my portion of the conference agenda.
Yes, it does. Let us move on to review our consensus of K1 through K. Review our consensus of K1 through K41, before we answer the research, the question from the preholder on K1 through K41.
Director, review our two proposals, eight starters, one we have titled on K42, a resolution approving settlement of litigation entitled New Jersey State PVA versus the County of State, St. Anthony Prosecutor's Office, which would be K41, I said K42, and Resolution K43, a resolution appointing Shirley Force to the position of the State County Director for Senior Services Disability and Veteran Affairs, effective immediately.
Thank you very much, Captain Lee. Any questions for the preholders on the lead card? Any need for taking a session?
No, Mr. Director, none this evening. The first one was a settlement of the PVA 265. Shirley, Shirley?
Very good, so can I have a motion for adjournment? Freeholders top third?
Yes.
Pass?
Yes.
Not me, it's Chris James?
Yes.
Deputy Director LaSara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
So that brings our conference agenda to an end. I'll remind everyone one more time that there's a buffet in the lobby. You're all very kind to stay here with us, the apartment gets really warm, so feel free to adjourn downstairs. So feel free to adjourn downstairs. And of course, you're always welcome to take your orders here through the distance of the county. With that, let's launch into our regular meeting. Lou with the announcement of the open public meetings law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted, the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building, and all the two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. Preholders, Opther, Best?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
James?
Report?
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Director Bartlett?
Here.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our preholders in the county of St. Louis, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
The reasons to die are the United States of America and the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice in all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all of them, living, who died most serving in the United States Armed Forces and as first responders here in the United States, particularly including former St. Louis County Corrections Officer Todd Cale. And also today, a friend and constituent, a former candidate for the State Assembly, Keith Krebs. Can I have a motion for the minutes of April 23rd?
Second. Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
James?
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for approval?
So move. Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra? Director Bartlett?
Yes.
So, Preholder reports. I bet I know what's standing to talk about. I'm going to sit back. But this is National Infrastructure Week. Across the nation, organizations, businesses, and government are talking about the importance of infrastructure to American progress, to economic development, jobs, and simply getting around. As part of the Infrastructure Week, this Thursday morning at 8:30 AM, actually 9 AM, I guess 8:30 is breakfast, right? At 9 AM, we're having a panel of private sector, public sector, and NJDOT folks moderated by myself in Wayne at William Patterson University Business Campus. We're going to be talking in general about infrastructure as a driver of economic development and in particular about what's going on right now with the 463 project in Littleton, Willis Park in Littleville. It's going to be an interesting panel. I was happy, I can report this to the board, to be able to kick off Infrastructure Week at the NJTPA on Monday, where we accelerated $3.5 million in funding for the Sixth Street Bridge connecting the Bunker Hill industrial area of Addison to Prospect Park. Those funds are going to, $3.5 million is going to become available a year ahead of schedule, which will let us get started on construction, excuse me, planning and engineering in 2019 and construction in 2021. NJTPA also voted to allocate $1.5 million in new funding to support a rails-to-trails project on the Greenwood Lake Railway, which is going to be a wonderful scenic walk through West Milton. So we're going to get started on that as well, with that $1.5 million in new funding. And with that, I am concluding.
So this past weekend, as you all know, I tried to relieve myself many times. Memorial Wall up at Garrett now. And I have to give a great big shout out to Darryl Sward and his team up at the mountain because he took an abandoned soccer field and transformed it. He transformed it into a memorial for all the men and women who lost their lives in Vietnam fighting for our freedoms. Darryl, I just am blown away by the work that you guys did up there, as is everyone else. It was amazing what you did. And to our Sheriff's Department, to the gentlemen and the women up there who donated their time and efforts to making sure that not only did the wall get their said weight, but that they made sure no one did any damage to it. They were on call up there 24 hours a day the entire time the wall was there. So I just had to tell you how appreciative I am of what everything you've done and what a great success you made that wall. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. Last week, on Monday, was the first day of Ramadan, so I want to wish Ramadan al-Farrah to all my fellow Muslim Americans and Muslims throughout the world, recognizing this month, and I thank all the different localities throughout the state of county which have lit a crescent or a fanfare to recognize the month. It's a great feeling to be in St. Louis County where these holidays don't have to be explained. People don't have to feel hard for others. This is a part of the fabric of our county and what we're all about. But I do have to say, it is saddening to me that since our last meeting, there's been another attack, another killing at a synagogue in California this time, due to an assault weapon used by an equalistic. That same person tried to, was also known to have tried to commit an arson attack, I believe, on a mosque in the area. Just this last few days, there was an arson attack on a mosque which burned down in New Haven, Connecticut. It is sickening and sad to see this trend which affects people of all faiths. And unfortunately, I want to say I'm very grateful and thankful to the sheriff here, who has been, not just in Ramadan, not just since these attacks, but for years now, has been providing security to many of the major mosques I know and I know other houses of worship during large events, during prayer sessions. We're very lucky to have a sheriff and a police force, and a lot of our local police forces who understand the threat, who are available. That's not the case everywhere. But I do think because of our diversity, because of all the communities that we do serve, that we are a target, unfortunately. And I hope and pray that that kind of tragedy will never affect us here in St. Louis County. We are home to well over 100 churches, synagogues, and mosques and temples, and all types and manner, houses of worship, and people of different cultures and faiths, and we'll do everything we can as a county to protect those people. But we do have to be on guard to the fact that unfortunately, there is a very ugly natural trend of hateful violence that is precipitating. Thank you.
Planning and Development, the report directors, committee authorized the seating practice. We've received a contract to work with Cheryl and Holloway to work in consultation with the Planning and Development Department. We also authorized a grant update to the St. Louis County Cultural and American Council, the Film Festival. It's a treat, and the committee authorized the public viewing and housing community development block.
I just want to point out, Sandy Bolle, Sandy Lizarra, always points out the good that everybody else does. She put a lot of effort into this, posing the park, namely the event that Sandy had been forefront of all these positive things. What you really do is incredibly generous, Preholder, and I'm glad you're a college, and I thank you for the work.
Thank you all very much for all that information and couldn't read more. No communications, so let's move on to the oral portion, the public portion of our meeting. Can I have a motion to open?
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
So let's begin the public portion of the meeting. Anyone who wants to say anything to us in approach to the podium, you will have three minutes. And anything you say will be a matter of public record. We start by signing in and introducing ourselves. Who's that?
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lizarra? Director Bartlett?
Yes.
To break this to our consent agenda, can I have a motion to add K42 and K43?
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adopt consent agenda K1 through K43?
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Actually, Director, that is not necessary for this particular, I was mistaken. For the capital warrants, this supplement of that statement is not necessary. So it needs not to be on there.
Next, would you read the title of a capital warrant, 2019-05?
Capital warrants of the county of St. Louis, New Jersey authorizing the acquisition and installation of a camera surveillance system for the use of the St. Louis County Jail and incorporating $1,100,000 from general capital fund balance of the county.
Yeah, well, I just would like to say that this will be taken out of our capital surplus, so we won't be borrowing the money. We'll be paying for this project cash. This is a project that the sheriff came to the Finance and Administration Committee and said that he'll be able to operate the jail proficiently by adding upgraded camera system and putting cameras in areas that don't exist now. So in the long run, that's going to save us money and should more than pay for it, so.
And is this a feature of your cameras?
Correct.
Segmented by Opther. Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lizarra? Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Can I have a motion on personnel?
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. I have a motion on bills.
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Deputy Director Lizarra? Director Bartlett?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, the personnel agenda that you just voted on was the appointment of Michael LaCicatos as our planning director. Many of you know Michael. He's lived in county for 14 years? Pretty good.
Forty what?
It was a departure of Michael LaPlace. We conducted interviews, and I was happy to recommend Michael for the position. So congratulations, Michael, and welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, Michael. We've worked together through NJTPA for many years, and easy and obvious choice. And that's the perfect way. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, I don't think I did a vote for payroll. Did I?
You didn't.
Oh, okay.
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Nothing I can do to adjourn and get down to the bank.
Yes.
Frank, I'd like you to read verbatim all the departmental reports.
We see the file.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Preholders, Opther?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Deputy Director Lizarra?
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Thank you very much. Have a good meeting.